I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, December 11, 2024. The notice of option to recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 38431.02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, and that would be for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney for any item listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38431.03A3. If we can do roll call.
Harold Mandino.
Bob Harris.
Present.
Christine Sheehy.
CJ Lukey.
Present.
Mary Norton.
Ian Sharp.
Megan Weller.
Present.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll do public comment. Any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within our jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the meeting. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at that time, at the time that the item is to be heard. Is there public comment at this time? Yes. If you would come up and state your name and address for the record. And you are Mario Mastrosimone.
Can you hear me? My name is Mario Mastrosimone. I live at 1402 North Beaver Street here in Flagstaff, up in Hospital Hill. And the reason that I'm coming to this meeting, as I was told this is where I should start because I originally started in the city council meeting. The neighborhood that I live in, my street is flooded with Airbnbs. There's literally three actual homeowners on my street, and the rest of them are Airbnbs, 27 of which are owned by one person. And this one person is now adding multiple units on each property. I believe one of his properties, the Stone House, has five units in it, and he's getting ready to add another unit. The reason that I'm coming to the zoning committee is when I went to get, to build an accessory dwelling unit for my son who can't afford to live in Flagstaff, I had to go through many hoops, including changing my address from a Forest Avenue address to a Beaver address to address a setback issue, which was part of zoning. They required the setback. And the Airbnb guy, my setback was five feet from the back or 15 feet from the sides. And he built another unit on one of his properties, six inches from the property line, which then caused a huge drainage issue for one of my neighbors, Sue. I was watching some of the city council meetings, and one of the things was a restrictive covenant, which I believe falls under zoning. And when I went to get my Airbnb, I was forced to sign a restrictive covenant saying that if I build an accessory dwelling unit on my property, that one of the units on my property had to be either full-time live-in or a long-term rental. And I understand that now this is trying to, they're trying to repeal this, and I have no idea why. We have a housing emergency, and the city repealing something that is a covenant for the city of Flagstaff to require that something be lived in is contradictory to what the housing emergency has stated. And I believe this has something to do with zoning with this covenant. I know that the state has certain restrictions on Airbnbs. I noticed that the city of Flagstaff doesn't even follow their own rules, like they need to have a separate power meter for each unit. The other thing is, my house is the same floor plan as the house next door. They're paying $400 less in property taxes than me, but it's an Airbnb, so I feel like I'm being penalized. I went to the assessor and was told that I had to take that up with the city. So as far as zoning goes, I know that other cities, Sedona, I believe, has more restrictions than we do. I believe they even limit the number of Airbnbs that they allow in their city. And I just want to bring it to the city's attention and all the different committees and whatnot, that I feel that Flagstaff is not doing enough to protect our city from turning into a hotel. And the city council and all of the different committees are doing everything that they can to exacerbate the situation with the housing prices in Flagstaff. I feel that they're not doing enough.
Alex, may I ask a question?
Due to open meeting laws, we can't discuss public comment.
The question I was going to ask is if he's made an appointment and met with anybody from planning, or from the...
I have. I met with Development Services. I've been there. I have met with Kurt, Kevin Dunlop. I've had him out several times, and he's basically neutered as far as what he can do. He says this is what the city allows, and this is what we have to do, even though it is against the codes. And then I met with the planning, no, it was the, one of the city, I've already met with the city planner. And then I also set up a meeting to meet with the mayor personally.
That was my only question, so.
Good. And I gave you my card, and we'll see what we can do. But we can't discuss here.
I know. I just, I get this little microphone, and I kind of like that I can just come up here and vent a little bit, but nothing against you guys. Thank you very much. And I keep trying to say council members, and I know you're commission members. I'm sorry if I called you council members. Thank you for your time.
Hey, maybe you just elected us. Oh, no, just joking. No, thank you. I do not want that much power. Okay. Approval of the minutes from November 13, 2024. Has everybody read the minutes? And would like, somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
There was a motion made. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so there was a motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Bob, were you gonna aye?
Yes, aye.
Thank you.
All right. Under General Business, we are going to hear PZ 2400216, Resource Protection Standards applicability. I'll hand it off to you.
Thank you so much. So we have two amendments you're going to hear tonight. This is just a work session, public hearing before Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled for January 8th, so we have some time to think about this over the Christmas holidays. What I will tell you about these two amendments is the easiest or shortest written amendment probably has the biggest backstory, and the longer written amendment has the shortest backstory. So we're going to start with resource protection, and I'm just going to show you what that amendment looks like is how we're going to start, because that's how this is sort of panning out, is it's just easier to show you the text. So, and I don't know how familiar you all are with our resource protection overlay standards, so I'm happy to go through them and explain what they all are. But I'll just give you a highlight really quickly of what the proposed code amendment is. So we have a resource protection overlay. That overlay follows, falls over certain properties in Flagstaff, and I do have maps and can show you all of this data. And then there are set standards when your property is located in the overlay. The proposal, you'll see here, there's an applicability section. So in most of the standard sections of the zoning code, it tells you what properties those particular standards apply to. In this section, we are proposing to amend Section B, which currently states that resource calculation for slope, floodplain, and forest do not apply to areas within the public right-of-way of existing or proposed major or minor arterial roads. So what the proposal here does by crossing out the arterial and replacing it with rights-of-way for streets includes all levels of streets. So that's your local streets, that's your residential, your collector, which most streets of higher intensity are considered collectors, and then your arterials. So arterials are things like Butler and Ula. Woody Mountain is a future arterial. So those are the bigger streets meant to carry a bigger capacity. So I don't, I mean, yes.
So can you read it the way that it would state if the amendment were to pass?
If the amendment were to pass, it would say, "Resource calculation standards for slope, floodplain, and forest resources do not apply to the area within the public rights-of-way for streets and major utilities." So instead of specifying one class of street, it would become all streets. So I've got a little, you probably want to know a little bit about resource protection, so let me sort of fill you in. Don't be scared by the presentation I'm going to pull up, because I'm only going to go through part of it. There's Bob. Hi, Bob. Okay. It's going to pop up. There we go. So again, I talked, this is not the right presentation. This one is. So I talked about the resource protection overlay, and I'll give you the back history on this. You want me to make it bigger? Good. Absolutely. The, the bigger story behind this is, so everything that's in green is in the resource protection overlay. So the, the history on this is that in 1990, when we adopted the Land Development Code, which is the zoning code before the code we have now, there were resource, the resource protection overlay was adopted. It was generally applied to every vacant parcel that was at least five acres in size. Now, that's a generality. It's not a perfect science. It did miss a couple pieces, and it picked up a couple, you know, a couple smaller pieces here, a couple things got missed there, right? It's not a perfect science, but that's essentially where the resource protection standards were applied. The resource standards specifically apply to floodplain, slope, and forest resources, and particularly in that order. So it prioritizes floodplain resources over slope. It prioritizes slope over forest. Now, when you really dig into the resource protection standards, what does this all mean? So I'm, I think it's really important to understand, so this talks about the priority, floodplains, slopes, forest. There are some other features that are listed, but there are no specific standards. So the only thing about code, when code only works when you write specific standards, highlighting that we want to preserve other things isn't good enough. But we do work with developers to try to preserve other features like rockout croppings and seeps and springs and so forth. In terms of floodplains, there really are no specific preservation standards. What we do with floodplains is we categorize them as rural, urban, or rural. In rural, we really don't allow much development, and we only, we do, however, always allow streets and infrastructure to cross a rural floodplain. We have lots of development in urban floodplain. We're sitting in one building right now, right? A lot of development occurs in the urban floodplain. A lot of development has already occurred in the floodplain, and most of the floodplains are on lots that are not even in the resource protection overlay, right? So remember, looking at this map, you can see the core areas of Flagstaff that were developed, basically, it's everything that was developed prior to 1990. A lot of the downtown and surrounds are in, and Southside have floodplain on them. Those areas were already developed and are not subject to the requirements of the resource protection overlay. So I do want to jump into, I'm sure you've seen the staff talk about these time and time again when they're presenting a case to you, especially in a subdivision. So they'll come out and they'll talk to you about what are the standards for steep slopes. Why I just want to show you what these standards are is it's really important to compare the difference between residential, commercial, industrial, and public lands. You can see that the standards for residential development are higher. They're higher in terms of slope, and they are higher in terms of forest resources. So I know, if you see the difference, industrial zones are public and open space zones are at 30%. Commercial zones are at 30%, but residential, we're up there at 50%, okay? At the time when this was developed in the 90s, our priority was commercial and industrial development. And that is clear when you look at this code, that we were incentivizing and prioritizing that particular type of development. 34 years later, it is clear today that we are prioritizing residential development because we are in a housing crisis. So in terms of just trying to achieve minimum densities that can be accomplished within our existing zoning districts, we're, we're struggling and we're losing the battle. Where we're losing the battle is specifically in single-family residential subdivisions, which isn't, they are alone, are not going to solve the density issues, and they're not going to solve the housing crisis. But they are preferred land use that most people attain, want to have, right? In terms of preference, you probably have fewer people come out and speak against single-family residential neighborhoods, detached, single-family than you do on multifamily cases, right? I mean, that's been my experience. I'm sure it's yours as well. So with all of this said, I will jump out of this presentation because that's the highlight of what the resource protection overlay does. It also has a lot of other complexities to it that make it even more tricky and even harder to apply to single-family residential, okay? So keeping that in mind, I just want to run through, I want, what I really want to do is sort of take you on a tour, because there's some key points that I want you to understand in terms of changes that have happened in code from 1990 to today. And I think the easiest way would be if I loaded you all up in my car and drove you through some neighborhoods, but unfortunately, I cannot do that. So what I'd like to do is just drive you through a map, if that makes sense. And I'm going to try to get through this as quickly as possible. So I don't know if you're all familiar, familiar with University Avenue as you're kind of going through the Woodlands Village area, and I'm not familiar, I'm not, I'm not sure if you're familiar with maybe Boulder Point. So this is kind of where we're going. So this is University Heights here. And the first subdivision I want to stop you at is Aspen Creek Town Homes. This was developed in 2001. It's approximately 5.7 lots per acre, okay? You cannot achieve this today under today's current codes. Meanwhile, the first three subdivisions I'm going to show you, they're all in the same zoning category. They're in medium density. They are not in single, the single-family, they're in medium. These townhomes, what's unique is, do you see how these other roads are in white? But the roads within the townhouse subdivision are not white? What that means is that the roads within the townhouse subdivision are not public rights-of-way. They are private streets. Those private streets are 28 feet in width, okay? You can't do that today. So that's the big change from 1990 to 2024. Today, if you were to build this, your streets would need to be 57 feet wide. That's a big change. That's substantial. So let me walk you through the next one. Here you have Woodlands Village, which is a different housing style. It is detached, single-family. It was developed in 1996. It is also in the medium-density zone, and it is 2.76 units per acre. So pretty low in a zone where we want nine to 14 units an acre. Even those townhomes are pretty low, right? 5.7, when we want to be upwards of nine. If we want to be a transit-friendly community, we want to be upwards of eight. So the streets in here are about, they were about 55 feet wide. The rights-of-way within the subdivision average about 14% of the total land area. So it's out of 17 total acres, that public right-of-way is, is 14%, okay? So I'm wanting you to understand that if we take out the streets out of the calculation and the developer still has to preserve 50%, it's going to only look at the 50% of like the areas that are in the gray, right? So you're still getting a substantial portion of the overall development site where the resources need to be preserved. I probably don't have to walk you through all of these subdivisions for you to see because the story goes on and it's the same. The more and more subdivisions I look at, and I have a local engineering firm that's looking at this data for me as well, but as I've walked through, many of these subdivisions that have been developed since 2000 to 2024 were ranging anywhere from 10% for right-of-way. Presidio and the pines, for example, is much higher density. Its right-of-ways came in at 10%. It has streets as small as 27 feet. Its collectors are much larger, and they come in at about 66 feet. You have, what's odd is Railroad Springs, it's a manufactured home subdivision. Their streets came in at about 18%. So we are ranging anywhere from about 15 to 20% of the total acreage within a subdivision development, okay? So I just wanted to point that out in terms of, if there's a fear that this, this standard is going to wipe out our resource preservation, or it's going to clear-cut forest in any way, that is absolutely not the goal. We never are able to save trees inside of the right-of-ways. The right-of-ways are a necessary ends to a means in order to create single-family home lots. And again, we have really placed the burden for all of our resource preservation to occur on our residential lots, right? So we've had a huge policy shift from 1990 to today. Just a couple more points that I wanted to get across is, we know that we need to do an overhaul of our resource protection overlay standards. We need to look at the entire component in, in, in its entirety. And we are in the process of doing that. We are working with the consultants. They have, they are going through our code, helping us identify barriers to both affordable housing and carbon neutrality. We are at the next phase where they're starting to develop code concepts. Early on, they identified the resource protection overlay as a barrier to, to providing that affordable housing as well as carbon neutrality, because really what they're finding is it's a barrier to density. I will tell you, in the single-family residential zone, the highest you can really achieve with detached, single-family homes with all of our standards, the way they are, is about four units an acre. The R1 zone would want to achieve between five and six. In reality, we'd want eight to 10.
So a couple of things that we've been talking about at these meetings this year have been to, with the resource protection overlay would be to not necessarily have the trees on the lots, but trees on the outskirts.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And then that would help with this resource over, protection overlay. But also, my thought is that, you know, as I look around where I live, and as I'm bundling up needles and...
Yes.
Leaves, and how my neighborhood, when I look on, like my neighbor's house was for sale, so I looked on Zillow, and we're in, you know, a high fire zone.
Yes.
Which...
The entire city is.
Well, no, not every place. So I've looked at other...
The entire city falls under a high-risk fire.
It's very interesting, because I look at other properties, and they're not as high as where I live. But anyhow, they, it, it would probably be better for property if the resources were on the edge of the, is that, you know, so that, that helps for, I mean, I'm looking at homeowners and homeowner insurance and things like that as well in my mind. And so, you know, having that, having the resources on the outskirts probably works better for everyone in a way.
So let me help you a little bit with that. So yes, moving tree resources, because most of the tree resources we're preserving are the ponderosa pines, although we do have other native trees that are included in the resource protection overlay, especially the gamble oak, which is a deciduous tree. Ponderosa pine trees are fantastic, right? They are really a very fire-resistant tree. They can be located within some proximity to a home, okay? Firewise, firewise techniques and firewise recommendations would tell you, they don't want to see those trees within five feet of your home. You don't want anything combustible within five feet of your house. You really want to create that five-foot barrier. Now, that, then the question becomes, is that to the trunk of the tree? Is that to the canopy of the tree? So there's a larger conversation that has to go there as well. And we are currently working with the fire department on our larger changes to the resource protection overlay, so that we can come back with some really top-notch standards that are going to apply. And yes, we would like to create neighborhoods. We would like to create places where resources are pushed further away from the individual homes, because here's the thing, is you can live with the tree, but you have to take care of it. The tree is not necessarily going to start the fire or make you, but if you don't take care of it, if you don't take care of the pine needles, and if I could drive you through this neighborhood, I could show you that almost, I'm sure all these people love their homes dearly. Every single one of these homes has pine needles on the roof, right? They've just increased their vulnerability. And what we do know about fire is what makes whole neighborhoods go is one house. One house has something combustible next to it. That one house goes, you've got wood fences that connect those houses together. So it's not just the trees. It's everything combustible we put adjacent to our homes, including our wood fences. So with all of that being said, you know, there definitely is a big firewise construction. And we definitely need to look at the resource protection overlay as a whole in terms of trees and slopes. But I wanted to get to the why we're jumping ahead, because our code analysis project is telling us, there's probably some long-term approaches to dealing with resources, but there's some short-term things that we need to look at. This is one of those short-term things that we've been looking at, because we have development going now hot and heavy in our greenfield areas. So when I showed you that map, that whole southern part of the city, the whole John Wesley Powell corridor, has subdivisions afoot going on. And if we can't make the small change, we're going to lose out on the 10, 15 additional homes. I mean, we're not talking about huge density changes, but we're talking about enough that it does start to shift the needle in the direction we need to go. So we're asking to make the small change now, in light that we know that we'll be making larger changes in the future. So that's the long and short of the story. That's all of the fun talking points. We've got policy changes. We've got ways we've incentivized things in the past. And we think that this small change is really going to help us move the needle. It will also help us, the one thing that I've never, I haven't talked about is, when you look at some of these developments, you're seeing these gridded networks of streets. That's something we try very hard to achieve. That's something we try very hard to achieve. The more natural features we have to deal with, the harder it is to achieve, achieve that grid network. That grid network is super supportive of alternative transportation. It is super supportive of bikes and pets. We get connectivity between all kinds of different neighborhoods. So this is a street pattern we're always trying to accomplish. But we, we often run into resources that where we find ourselves putting in cul-de-sacs and we don't connect streets. And we, we can't get the development pattern as well that we're looking for. So we're hoping in the, in the short run that we can make the small change and not lose out on a big the area that's under development while we're working on the large change, can't get there fast enough. So that's the story.
Okay. And CJ?
Yeah, I just had, they're more informational for me. On the trees, is there any differentiation between the older trees and the younger?
Sure. Our code tries really hard to, it basically will allocate a point ratio to each size of tree. Works great on small sites because we count every tree on small sites. When you're doing a subdivision that's hundreds of acres, you don't typically count every tree. And so it becomes more of an area wide or we use a sampling method. So we don't have that ability to look at the yellow pines, right? Like, are we, which trees are we keeping? The code gives you more points towards those larger trees. That is our preference. And so we need to come up with a better way of accomplishing that on the larger scale when we're dealing with hundreds of acres because we can't. It's, it's very, um, difficult when you have to look at each and every tree. I've done it. It makes me want to cry. She's listened to me time and time again. So, um, you know, when you have to do that level of work, it, as a staff person, it causes you a huge amount of stress because golly gee, you're going to miss one. But, um, yes, the goal is we really want to preserve the big trees. The big trees are, had the least fire risk as well. Um, they're the most fire resistant. So we, we are, I mean, if I could dig into the science for you of what we're actually looking at doing, we're looking at working with LiDAR data to come up with modeling that's more scientifically based um, with the tree resources. We might go somewhere else entirely with slopes, but I don't have that, I don't have the end of that story to tell you.
And then on the amendment that we're talking about streets.
And only public streets.
Well, when you, when you say only public streets, we're not really building, um, new residential with private streets. So so are we talking about those streets being narrower? More narrow? I don't know.
Not yet. We're trying to get there too. Um, that's definitely in our code analysis is, um, modeling what our street widths have done over time. There's a lot of, in order to take our local standard and bring it back down, there's a lot of things that need to happen into, including probably amending our fire code.
So, so, you know, I know I've probably talked privately before with you all about how both my daughter who lives in Peoria, my son who lives in Los, in the Henderson area, they have very small lots where they build two story homes that are, I mean, they're big homes. Um, but their lot size is a lot smaller than we would have here, which brings the cost of the house down and allows development, developers to develop more homes on that acreage. Is that what we're shooting for?
Yes, we need to be able to minimize street widths in order to get there. So townhouse developments especially are really dependent on a much smaller street width. And someday, if you'd like me to take you on a tour, we just currently can't accomplish those. So essentially, I mean, if the, the backstory on this is that most of the law, most of the streets within townhome developments are private, which means they're privately owned and privately maintained. When you don't build a street to public standards, the city will not maintain it. What has happened and what is still happening to this day is these developments, their HOAs approach the city and they want the city to take on the maintenance because they can't afford it. Right? It, it, it is a cost deferral back too. So we're trying to find the happy medium. Where can we come up with a public street standard that's still going to allow us to accomplish these things? That's still going to make our fire department okay? That's still going to make our public works department okay? I don't have that answer for you, but we're working on it.
Thank you.
No, I don't need a motion, but if you're good, if you don't need any information, I will tell you that there are definitely concerns in the community. I have met with a local group, um, F cubed on this particular amendment. Um, and I'm taking a group of them on a tour here on Friday. We, we met yesterday and consulted about this. So, you know, be prepared by the time we get to public hearing. There, there might be some opposition to this. I'm trying like, hey, everybody, this is going to be okay, but, but, but so you know.
When you say you're taking them on a tour, are you actually taking them out?
Yep.
Could you take pictures for us of actual pictures rather than this?
And if you, if, if on an individual basis, you have some time and you want to go on this tour with me, I'm happy to take you. Just, I'll do it without a quorum. So if this is something you're really interested in and you want to see, I will make the time. I will drive you. It takes maybe thirty five minutes to go on this short tour. Okay?
I was gonna, I was gonna say where we live in Green Lawn, Lower Green Lawn, we do have a lot of these similar developments. So I think at least I understand what they look like. In Lower Green Lawn, have you ever gone around there and seen?
But the, the tour that I'll take you on will show you what resources have looked like over time, what it's resulted in, what you're seeing in terms of neighborhoods. It's more of a resource and it's more of a tree focused. But if you're interested, I'm happy to take you. I'll come pick you up at your house.
Really?
Yeah, I know.
You live close by?
I'm a hop, skip and a jump away from you.
I know. You live very close by. I haven't walked by your house lately, but, um, I had a question and then it just.
Okay. But I'm here. If your coaster comes back, I'm here. And by the way, you look gorgeous.
Thank, thank you. Publicly, I'm supposed to.
So today went by fairly easy. I'm sure we've got a lot of people that are going to be watching and paying attention to this. Um, but, you know, it might look a little bit different when we're here on January eighth, so just be prepared.
Well, you know, I, and I do, I have concerns both ways because I think we have a housing crisis. We need to solve that. I'm, you probably notice I ask probably sometimes, not all the time about have they thought about, you know, putting in homes? Affordable homes where instead of rental apartments, um, and what we're looking at south of, of Butler would be more housing for homes. I'm not saying that there's not going to be apartments there, but we're looking more at probably more single family homes. And to me, it's how can we achieve? For me, it's an affordable.
It's an affordable, single family, detached, single family home.
I, but also, you know, I, I know the old slogan that I don't hear as much lately, but don't phoenix flag. You know, we, we.
We just talked about that earlier.
Yeah. So we don't hear that as much anymore.
Poverty with a view too.
Is poverty with a, but you know what? I have lived here since nineteen seventy five and that has been the, the, you know, mantra since that time. Um, and I've lived in a duplex. I've lived in another type of single family home and then in my fa- single family home as well as apartments all over town. So, you know, I, I have different perspectives and I have the perspective of how do you keep a house affordable for young families who need a place to live if they're going to work in this community? And that's a concern of mine.
Yeah, no, that's our number one goal. Um, you know, it's not going to be just one thing, but, but stay tuned. It's coming. We are working on it. We are engaging in the conversation. But as my, um, fearless leader always says, we have to prioritize our priorities. Everything comes at a cost. Everything.
Yes.
So it is about balancing our priorities and determining, right? So I think as I've come forward with changes to the ADU code, there are definitely implementa- impl- implications, um, and costs to that as well, right? We want to be able to choose those for ourselves. Um, so that's what we're working on. It's going, there are going to be com- community conversations, but stay tuned because the code concepts will be coming your way and it'll all be clear soon.
But the ADU changes.
Were mandated by.
Mandated by the state.
Agreed. That's why I'm saying, no, that's why I'm saying we want, we want the ability to set our priorities for ourselves rather than having the state mandate what our priorities are for us. That's very heard. And so that's what our code concept plans are going, are, are starting the, the discussion on is how do we manage our priorities? Cause you, you, you can't have everything. It's not possible.
Does anybody else have it? Oh, CJ?
And, and I know we're not discussing this, but that does include the accessory or that does include the Airbnb conversation, right? That comes up again.
So the Airbnb conversation is kind of a moot point because we have no ability to control the Airbnb conversation as that is also a state mandate. So we do not have the ability to legislate Airbnbs. And I know I hear it all the time, time and time again. Um, but we just don't have that ability. Do you want to see if there's any public comment? I do see folks in the room.
Sure. Um, I was going to ask any commission members if they have any other questions or comments before we move to that. Megan or Bob? All right. Oh, Bob, are you going to say something?
Oh, I just did want to thank you for your time and, and putting this presentation together for us. Very informative and there's a lot to it. And, uh, I know it's a lot, but it's going to be important solving some of these issues. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then, um, if there's public comment or question, um, I see that Mario has a comment. If, again, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Mario Mastrosimone, fourteen oh two North Beaver. Um, I have a question for you. Um, I actually just watched a thing on PBS about, uh, high density. And I know that Tempe is building a huge community and they're trying to model it off of the communities that are already have been existed in existence in Philadelphia for, uh, almost a hundred years. And what they're finding is, is they, they, they had to go to the fire departments and they mandated that the fire departments uh, give a distance for certain roads and, and how big they are. And they came out with a, like a hundred and fifty meters, a hundred and forty something meters for the fire hoses. And I know that, uh, and, um, there was another place, I can't remember what was, where the city found it was cheaper to put hoses and pumps in the neighborhoods. And it was cheaper to maintain than fire trucks and they would come in with little trucks. But is Flagstaff looking at, do, do we have a, a distance, uh, thing for, uh, the, these small things? Um, because I know that the people that live in those communities are quite happy not having people driving on roads. They basically have it narrow enough that you can pull up and put your groceries and then go park somewhere else. Um, and I don't know if you've seen what I'm talking about.
Thank you. Thank you. Is Alex, do you want to? What? Tiffany, do you have?
I believe Tiffany has a response.
Okay. I didn't see her.
Um, I actually, I mean, if you, if you get outside magazine, they just did an article about, um, the development in Tempe as well. It's getting a lot of press and publication. Um, but yes, uh, you know, we're trying to look at how to go back, um, in, in terms of standards. Right now, what our biggest, um, issue is, is our, the fire code that we've adopted, which is additional layer on top of the zoning code. So it sets out some standards for aerial apparatus. Um, so yes, those are all things we need to look at, but we do have to backstep some code requirements. Um, it does take a shift, right? So each division, look at all of us in the city, we're each all divisions and we all have our own little mandate. Planning, it's everything. Our job is to solve every problem. But, um, you know, water services is to focus on water services and sustainability focuses on sustainability and Parks and Rec focuses on parks. Uh, you know, so we, we have to move together as a team in order to get to those places. And sometimes it requires a different set of infrastructure, a different set of, um, labor, a different set of equipment in order to meet those standards. Because we don't just have aerial apparatus issues within new development. We have aerial apparatus issues in our existing downtowns. So even where we see the potential for infill and higher density. So it's, it is definitely an issue we need to solve across the board. It is on our list, um, and you'll be seeing more soon. But again, it comes down to prioritizing our priorities.
Thank you, Tiffany. Alex, um, comments or questions from the public online? Is there any comments or questions from any of the public online? I'll ask again.
I'm not seeing any indication that there is.
Okay. So are we ready to move to item B? Okay, that's item B is PC twenty four zero zero two seventeen, urban farm land use.
This one's a much longer text amendment. Uh, the long and short of it is creating a new land use called urban farm. This urban farm land use would be a primary, primary, a primary land use only permitted in the public facility zone. So you've heard me talk about the public facility zone before. So when you think about the land ownership and public facility, it's pretty heavily dominated. City of Flagstaff, you've got NAU, you've got the school districts, um, a lot of public organizations. There are some private properties that are in the PF zone. There's some strange outliers, uh, our parks do fall in this zone. We have, our sustainability division has been working on other sites not designated as parks. Just want to make that clear. Um, where they're looking at contracting with outside folks to start. Um, basically it's an expansion beyond a community garden. So it is looking at having a private contractor, um, increase food production in the city of Flagstaff. I mean, food production is one of the ways that we can make ourselves more sustainable, more reliable on our own needs. Um, I doubt we'll ever really be able to fulfill all of that, um, for our community because, you know, we live at, uh, seven thousand feet and that's a, that's a tough nugget. But there are amazing people that do amazing things with agriculture all the time, so I will not poo poo that in any way. So that is what the, um, urban or the urban farm, uh, land use looks like. There you see is a permitted use. And then we created some specific to use regulations. At the same time, we went ahead and made some, uh, modifications to community gardens as well. It just made sense as we were drafting some of these and you'll, you'll see them really quickly. So community gardens really are meant to serve sort of a neighborhood. Um, they're more, and so you've got everybody in the neighborhood. They can have their individual plot, especially if they don't have land on their own. If you go through town site, you'll see a community garden. There's one off of Isabel. They're, they're all over and they're, they're fairly successful. Um, and so there's a lot of things we already allow in terms of commer- community gardens. Um, again, that being more neighborhood focused, urban farm is the next step up. So it's not really heavy duty food production and processing, but it's an area to grow by a commercial grower, right? So it allows us to partner on some of our lands that aren't used on the regular, which we do seem to have some. So let, yeah.
So this would be both private and public?
This urban farms is really meant to be more of a commercial operation.
So some of the commercial operations that are already in town, are they identified in that? Would they? I'm sorry?
I'm not aware of a lot of commercial farming operations currently.
I know there's one or two. Right? Would there be one or two? Would there be one or two commercial farming?
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephen Thompson and I serve as a manager within the Sustainability Division, overseeing a lot of our food systems, programs and initiatives. There are entities within the community who do grow food for a profit. You'll see a lot of them in, like, the, not the community gardens, poof, at. Thank you. Oh my goodness, it's been a long day. So at the farmer's market and many of them also partner with, say, like the Flagstaff Family Food Center and other food banks in the area on that smaller scale. And we are trying to encourage more food production within the community. Recently, we conducted a survey working with a partner through a USDA grant that was a community food system assessment and it highlighted significant food insecurities in community members here in Flagstaff. And we're trying to promote growing food here. It makes us more resilient as Tiffany was mentioning. So there are some entities out there and we would like to expand opportunities.
Thank you very much.
There you go. All right. So let's dig into what these standards look like. So for community gardens, again, I clean, I'm just doing this as I go through the code. I'm cleaning up these applicability sections and making them standard throughout. So you could see it was originally, it said general, but I'm trying to start each one of these with applicability and make them all the same. So nothing really very substantial there. Our sustainability division a long time ago was part of Public Works. That's why it lists Public Works instead of sustainability. I recently met with our stormwater group. And so what this said for community gardens was that the site is designed and maintained so that water and fertilizer will not drain onto adjacent properties. Like that, like you could do that, like that would be possible. So what we changed that to is to say the first inch of runoff would be maintained, which is our low impact development standard. So this is what our stormwater engineers would prefer us do. This other standard would be a pretty high level to, the amount of engineering you'd need to do essentially. It would be pretty high for what is written as pretty simple.
So can you read that? It's so small, we can't read it. I can't read it from where I am.
Let me blow this up. Oops. I still need it to show me on the screen, but it says the first one inch of runoff must be maintained on site within the community garden per our low impact development manual, rather than the site is designed and maintained so that water and fertilizer will not drain onto adjacent property.
And who's going to measure that?
So if we, if we change the standard to compliance with our LID manual, that is easy for us to do because we have standards for LID, the one inch. Okay. Next up, there was a statement that said there shall be no retail sales on site except for produce grown on the site. So the statement says no, but yes. So now the statement just says yes. So now the statement says the sale of fresh produce and cottage foods produced on site is permitted on subject site in compliance with all state and local regulations. So all of this was here. There is another provision down below that I deleted that says the exact same thing. So I just combined the two things that had to do with sale and I put them in one sentence. Cause I like short and sweet. I don't know about you all. The other thing is, you know, we talked about the combined area of all buildings or structures. I just added the word buildings because buildings and structures are defined as two different things. Should not exceed 15% of the community garden area. We have some provisions about vertical, vertical gardens. So this is something new and different to look at. Not, they can be grown up on fences. They can add quite a lot of aesthetics to a site if we were to pursue this. Community gardens shall not be subject to the provisions of our landscape standards. This is super helpful. Doesn't make sense to landscape a community garden. So we'd like to call it out, make it really simple that those standards don't apply. Additionally, we're not requiring parking for, for a community garden. And you'll see, these are things that have come up as we've looked at the idea of an urban farm. We don't want to apply these standards there either. So some of these standards get taken out, but they were replaced by others. There was a maintenance section that tied it to landscaping and we've since changed that to, well, really this, this section right here on abandoned and unproductive community gardens covers that. That's really the maintenance key. This maintenance up here refers to our section, our, our landscaping standards, which require to keep all of your plants alive. So that really, if you're not keeping your plants alive, you've fallen into abandoned and unproductive. So there's that. Urban farm is written to sort of mimic the community garden, but knowing that it has, it's like a step above, right? It's, it's not just community based. So we've created an app ability standard for here. We've added in greenhouses, assuming, you know, if you're going to grow year round, you know, there's probably a propensity to want to have greenhouses so that, again, step up. Vertical gardens are here. This includes the keeping of animals. I will note that it is in accordance with exact, existing city code standards. So it, it's really is an accessory use. I'm going to tell you what that's limited to is chickens, ducks, poultry. It's not the big stuff. It's not cows or horses. It, it does include goats though. Small is, it does include goats. And we do have provisions for beekeeping as well. So again, you have that still, that first one inch of runoff. I worked with stormwater to come up with the right standard for these properties. Urban farms shall not be subject to landscaping standards. Again, seems pretty silly to landscape a farm. And we're not requiring the parking standards. Where either on-street parking or shared parking is available. So, you know, trying to build a parking lot to build a farm, this seems like a moot point. The sale of fresh produce again is permitted. And then urban farms may include accessory educational events. So we would see this as a, as a high, you know, we have lots of just general manufacturing uses in Flagstaff where, you know, field trips go. I could see field trips coming to the site. So we just want to make it really clear that these sites would include these educational events. If they're having events advertised citywide, such as like a, a large sale on the property, but something that's going to be widely advertised. We would have those properties go through either a temporary use permit or a special event permit. So when it's privately owned property or city owned property, it goes, it, the special event permit applies to city property rather than private property. Again, abandoned or unproductive. And then last up is we had to create a definition. So we have a new land use, so we have to create a definition. I probably should have started with this one. The growing and harvesting of agricultural products to provide food, fiber or horticulture vegetation. Horticultural vegetation for ornamental purposes. I like going to the CSA and buying flowers. I don't know if you all have done that, but it's pretty spectacular in the summer. May also include hydroponic crop production, greenhouses, gardens and the accessory keeping of animals as allowed by the city. So in our animal keeping chapter. So that is the land use. There you go.
CJ?
I didn't see any minimum on the acreage.
No, no minimum on the acreage. I mean, that's something we can add if, if, no minimum, no maximum either.
So I'm going off base here, but I know the pot industry is very big in the snowflake area. Cause I know somebody who builds there. And so does this include that?
No, that is a separate listed use and it's called marijuana cultivation.
Okay.
And it is only allowed in specific zones, specifically industrial.
Thank you.
Because marijuana smells.
It does. As well as cows and horses can smell, but we don't have those.
I think marijuana smells worse.
Just, yeah.
Skunky.
I, I can, I can attest to that because I used to work in a building at NAU that used to be the, the lab. It was the, not the, the lab and the, where they collected all the evidence. And one day I walked in and they had the halls. I was like, you know, students come down here. Oh, I couldn't work that day. But anyhow, yeah, thanks. Cause they had collected, they had hauled in a lot of pot. So let's just say that. It does smell. And it can give you a really bad headache.
Yes, yes, sir.
Bob?
You were, you were talking about the LID requirements. Are those currently required or looking to have them be required? I can't remember, he said.
Can you repeat what he asked?
Yes, he's asking about the LID requirement at that one inch. So currently the standard, there isn't a standard for urban farms. We needed to come up with one because urban farm is completely new. But we looked at community garden and the standard we had in community garden was that you needed to keep all runoff on site, which is very difficult to do. So we traded off with something that is much more reasonable, which is using our LID standards. Generally, you know, with these size of sites, it's going to be more like a small depression or a rain garden. It's definitely much more doable for these types of facilities and requires less engineering.
Okay. And then who, who ends up paying for that engineering installation of the LID of those sites?
The applicant or end commercial user for their urban farm, unless they have some kind of agreement with the property owner to have it done.
So what about the ones that are community use? Are those required to have that?
So the existing community gardens were required to retain all runoff. So I mean, I haven't gone back and looked at each one of them and their individual approvals. They predate me by a long shot. So I'm not exactly sure what engineering was applied. The city may have been more actively involved in those because a lot of those are the city's properties. They've gone through different, different divisions, programs. We may have incentivized them to assist with that. The one on Isabel, for example, is right adjacent to like a skate park. So that could have overall been addressed altogether. But overall, I don't have the individual statistics on each site.
Okay. And just for clarification, is water provided by the city on each of these community garden sites? And would it be on the commercial ones?
Yeah, thank you for, for that question. So at all the community garden sites that are operated by the Sustainability Office, we provide water for all the gardeners and we foot that bill and we maintain widenerization, turning the water on and off. As far as those commercial sites go, they do have water hookups that are provided by the city of Flagstaff, but it's whoever is licensing that, that property would be responsible for paying that water bill.
Okay.
Bob, do you have any other questions?
Oh, no, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, CJ?
So for instance, there's a property I see all the time at San Francisco and Franklin that's adjacent to NAU. It's just a big open lot. So how would that go about in terms of changing? I don't know who owns it. I'm ju, I'm just using that as a, as an what if? How do they go about then changing their zoning?
Changing their zoning?
If they wanted to be that commercial.
Urban farm. So right now, urban farm is only allowed in the public, would only be permitted in the public facility zone. So if that property is not in the public facility zone, then they would need to rezone or we could do a text amendment to accommodate that. We're in the process of going through our regional plan and it has some specific policies about food production. But I, I didn't want, we didn't want to step too far down the urban farm line without getting those policies in place and knowing that we were in a good spot for looking at other zoning categories. Again, also wanting to make sure that we're balancing the need for housing and all of those other things and not, not overly prioritizing. So I, I, that's the best answer I can give you.
Any other questions? Yes. If you'll come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Peter Friederisi and I live in Old Town. I.
Can you give the address, the specific address?
713 West Grand Canyon Avenue. And I teach in the NAU Sustainable Communities Program, which does a lot of work in the realm of urban agriculture. So I had a, so I'm a strong supporter of this change to the zoning code. But I, I have just a couple of questions. My understanding of the distinction here between community garden and urban farm is that in the urban farm zone, there's no maximum size limit dictated for the green, for a potential greenhouse. So Tiffany or Stephen, do I, do I understand that correctly? Okay, great, thanks. And then we also have been working with the Office of Sustainability on doing some preliminary planning for a site at the McAllister Ranch property, which has existing buildings. And so I'm wondering how the, an urban farm on that site would potentially integrate use of existing buildings, since those are not mentioned in the, in the code here.
So there's no limitation on the use of buildings? That's, that's the, there's no.
So the buildings can be used for other?
Yes, so I mean, that's why the, the definition is specific to include the greenhouses. I understand, there's no, in the community gardens, there is a limitation on accessory structures, but there's no limitations specifically on urban farms and that's done so purposely. Now, are there other development standards in the public facility zone? Yes. So there's lot coverage or floor area ratio or setbacks. Those all have to be met, but those are already included in the regulations of that zone. And wherever urban farms would be allowed, those would happen to meet, just like fences would have to meet the requirements of our fencing standards. Building height would be limited to 60 feet, but I doubt that anybody's going to build a greenhouse at 60 feet tall. So it's, it's pretty open and it's meant to be not being able to anticipate what exactly, how big an urban farm could be.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Okay, thank you. And, and just one more, and that's that the, there's the item about the events advertised citywide, needing a special event or use, use permit. And I can envision urban farms relying on things like, say, volunteer workdays or something like that. And I'm wondering what the threshold is for, would, I guess, an event not advertise citywide? Does that mean that that would not need a special permit of that sort? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the public? Any other from the commissioners? Okay. Hearing none? Thank you.
I'll be back January 8th.
Thank you. Well, this wasn't, I, we're, it's only 5:18 and we started late.
We did good.
Yeah. I'm going to move to, because we have, don't have to do any staff recommendation action, correct? So we can move on to miscellaneous items to and from commission members? You have something, Alex?
Yes, I'll be forwarding you an email about the regional plan and a, a retreat that we're trying to schedule about availability. I waited a little bit until I knew who our commissioners were going to be going into the new year. So just a heads up that that email is coming.
And so can we thank Bob for his service? So thank you, Bob, for your service. I don't know when your last meeting will be, if this is it, or it may be in, after January, but thank you.
Thank you. I thought I was done at the beginning of December, but I'm happy to fill in and help out.
Technically, commissioners are allowed to continue to serve until their seat is filled. So it's just coordinating with our new commissioner who has to do the mandated training. But yes. But yes, thank you very much, Bob, and thank you for helping out today especially.
No problem.
Is there anything else to and from commissioners? All right. Then the meeting is adjourned at 5:19. Thank you all.